Okay, and good evening and welcome to the Town of Orange 2022 Annual Town Meeting. I am pleased, we just closed the Selectmen, May Selectmen's meeting, and we have moved into the town meeting. It is 7:30, and this is being recorded on OGAT government television. And this evening's moderator is Attorney, Town Attorney Vincent Marino. I will turn it over to him at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Selectman, and I'm going on script so I don't screw it up. If everyone will please take their seat, I'm calling this annual town meeting to order. My name is Vincent Marino, and I am the moderator of the annual town meeting. I will, would like to introduce, we have the first selectman to my right, we have the Board of Selectmen, uh, sitting here with me at the table. We have Judy Wright Williams, John Corangelo, PJ Shanley, Mitch Goldblatt, and Ralph Okenquest. Also joining us this evening, we have the Board of Finance. We have Chairman Kevin Houlihan, Jim Leahy, Kevin Moffett, Jean, Joe Nuzzo, and Kevin McNabola. We have Director of Finance, John Sifarelli, Tax Collector, Tom Hurley, Town Engineer, Bob Britton, Highway, uh, Crew Chief, Don Foyer, Town Attorney happens to be here, Vincent Marino, Superintendent of Schools, Vince Scarpetti, members of the Orange Board of Education, believe the Chief of Police, Bob Gagney, Assistant Chief, Max Martin, Registrar of Voters happen to be here as well. If everyone would please stand, face the flag, which is in the back of the room, and, Mr. Hurley, would you please lead us with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I now call on Mary Shaw, Town Clerk, to read the notice of the annual town meeting.
Good evening. Notice is hereby given to the legal voters and all persons qualified to vote in the town meetings of the Town of Orange that the annual town meeting of said town will be held Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the gymnasium of the High Plains Community Center, 525 Orange Center Road, Orange, Connecticut, for the purposes of taking action at that time upon the following matters. Number one, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell and convey land acquired by the town through foreclosure of tax liens or by deed in liens of foreclosures of tax liens. Number two, to determine in accordance with Sections 12-142 and 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statutes, the installment due dates for all property taxes, including the property taxes on motor vehicles. Number three, to receive and discuss the report of the budget prepared by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022. By virtue of the Town Charter, Section 2.6(c), and a vote of the Board of Selectmen, Item 3 shall, shall be voted on by machine ballot at an adjourned town meeting referendum to be held Wednesday, May 18th, 2022, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM at the High Plains Community Center, 525 Orange Center Road, Orange, Connecticut, 06477. This is dated on, or at, dated at Orange, Connecticut on the 21st of April, 2022, signed by First Selectman James Ziole, Selectman Mitch Goldblatt, Ralph Okenquest, John Corangelo, and PJ Shanley, and was attested by myself, Mary Shaw. Mr. Moderator, in pursuant to the state statute, it should be noted for the record that the notice of the annual town meeting was published in both the Orange Town News and the Milford Orange Times on May 5th and 6th. It should also be noted, noticed that the annual town meeting was posted on the signpost in front of the town hall and signed by the majority of the selectmen. Absentee ballots will be available in the Town Clerk's office, and I would like to remind everybody to turn your cellphones off if you haven't done that already, and pursuant to Robert's orders and meeting conduct, I call for the orders of the day.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, the orders of the day will be as follows. There'll be discussion and vote on Items Number 1 and Items Number 2. By virtue of the Town Charter, Items Number 3 shall be voted on by machine ballot on Wednesday, May 18th. Anyone who wishes to speak will please go to the microphone, state your name and address, and you will be allotted two minutes to address the agenda items. Again, we will be discussing Items Number 1 and Items Number 2 only. Items Number 3 will be adjourned to machine ballot on May 18th. So, is there a motion to be made with regard to the authorization for the Board of Selectmen to sell and convey land acquired by the town through foreclosure of tax liens or by deed in lieu of foreclosure of tax liens?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Or is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to be made, uh, in accordance with Section 12-142 and 12-144 of the Connecticut General Statutes regarding the installment due dates for all property taxes, including property taxes on motor vehicles? Actually, I recognize Tax Collector, Tom Hurley.
Okay, I'd like to make one change to this motion. The $100 amount, I'd like to raise to $500. These small things are killing us, just to put it mildly. So my motion to approve that the taxes on real estate and personal property of $500 or more will be due and payable in two installments with due dates of July 1, 2020, and January 1, 2023, and that motor vehicle taxes and those taxes under $500 will be payable in a single payment due on July 1, 2022, and supplemental motor vehicle tax bills will be due on January 1, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mitch Goldblatt, 291 Drummond Road. You know, years ago, we used to have two payments on all taxes, and it took many years for the tax collector who continued to ask for anything over, under $100 to be put on one installment, which finally passed several years ago. Uh, I think bringing that from $100 to $500 is onerous. Um, I don't think anyone here, besides maybe a few people, were even aware of this change that has not been publicized, and I will vote against, if that's the motion, I'll vote against the motion, because I feel it should just remain at $100 in single installment, and not be raised to $500 for single installment. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Is motion on the floor, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion fails.
New motion?
Good, you're learning.
Mr. Moderator, we need, we need a new motion at this point?
There, is there any other motions to come before the floor?
I'd like to make the motion that I made before with the $100 in the, in place of the $500 in the previous motion.
This is a motion, okay, so, can you, Mr. Earl, can you restate the motion?
Yes. Motion to approve that the taxes on real estate and personal property of $100 or more will be due and payable in two installments with due dates of July 1, 2022, and January 1 of 2023, and that the motor vehicle taxes and those taxes under $100 will be payable in a single payment due on January, I'm sorry, on July 1, 2022, and supplemental motor vehicle tax bills will be due on January 1, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, the motion's been seconded. Is any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
All right. All right, uh, okay, but so we have now, Item Number 3, we adjourn, uh, to referendum.
Not yet.
Oh, there he is.
He was hiding behind the podium.
There he is, the Chairman Houlihan.
Let's see if I can read.
Yes, we recognize the chair.
Okay, thank you. Our Board presented the, the budget on April 21st to the town at the annual budget hearing, and I will, and that budget showed a one and a half percent reduction in the mill rate. I'll answer Mr. Goldblatt before he asks me the question. What's changed since then? Well, um, we met Monday night, what's changed since we presented that budget is the state changed the amount that we can charge on motor vehicles. They had lowered it to a maximum of 29 mils, and that's how, that was the budget we presented on the 21st. Since then, the governor has signed into law, the maximum mill rate for motor vehicles is 32.46. So what that changed into the budget is it actually lowered the mill rate from 32.75, that was proposed on the 21st, to 32.71. So currently, the reduction in mill rate is 1.62 percent, so your taxes have gone down a little bit more from what we presented that evening. Now, as far as, hopefully everyone votes yes on this budget, I know one of the things is the AMITI budget failed last week in all three towns. That, the Orange budget passing with the AMITI component does not approve AMITI's budget, so I just want to make that clear. Their budget has to be approved by the three towns in total. I mean, two towns get voted down if the overall yes voter, yes, it passes. And what'll happen is, right now, AMITI met Monday night with a new proposed budget that reduces Orange's portion by $104,305. Our budget, hopefully it passes, will, then, that money will not go to them, even though we have the original AMITI number, because that's what we, the best information we have. 2020, 2001, 2002, their budget failed 18 times. The Orange budget passed the first time around that year, and they just got their money that was based on the prior year budget, which is, if it continued to fail, that's where they would be. They would have funding from last year's level, but eventually, you know, they have another vote on, uh, May 24th for the, the revised budget that they passed Monday night. I just want to make it clear that voting yes on the Orange budget, if you were a no voter, does not approve the AMITI budget. That's a separate, distinct referendum. It has to be approved by the voters in their referendum, and any, anything that's in our budget, that's above and beyond what they eventually, if, like, now it's $104,000, we, the town will just save that money. It will not go to anyone, it'll stay in the town. And it, yeah, the last thing is, for John and, and Tom, it's important to the town that our budget gets passed, hopefully, because we need to send the tax bills out to the printer and get them out for the payments in, uh, July. And, yes, sir.
You, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Kevin, Mitch Goldblatt, 291 Drummond Road. Kevin, um, seeing that the AMITI vote, the most we would see, because we know if, if the vote fails, the budget is reduced. The most AMITI will charge us is $104,000, less than the original that you figured into your numbers. The Board of Finance determines the mill rate after the budget vote by the town, presuming the town passes its budget, and you know you have $104,000 excess in that, could you actually set the mill rate one or two hundredths less to actually reduce the amount asked of the taxpayers and not bring in that extra $104,000?
That would be on the assumption that that budget passes?
Even if it doesn't pass, we know that the most that AMITI's gonna ask for us is $104,000 less than their original ask. So, yes, if AMITI fails again...
They could raise it.
It would go, they would never raise it. I mean, we know that. You, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, if, if this budget fails, you won't raise the budget, right?
Correct.
So I think the, the logic there is that, at worst, it would stay the same, it would probably go down, but the same thing with the town budget. If the town budget fails, you're gonna find a place to reduce it, to, to get it to eventually pass. Hopefully, that doesn't get to that. My point is that even if, that we know the maximum AMITI budget is gonna be, I don't know the exact number, it'll be $104,000 less than what they first proposed, could we actually impose a mill rate that would take into consideration that amount, so that that amount is not being ta, being brought in by the taxpayers, and hopefully we'd give people a comfort level in voting for this budget, they're not voting for the original AMITI budget. I mean, it may only be a hundredth of a, of a mil, but...
Right.
Because we're going, we're going to referendum, giving them one mill rate at this budget. I'm not sure if we could do that.
John, does the, excuse me, does the, does the, does the ballot question use a mill rate or just an amount?
It's an amount.
Just the amount? It doesn't show the mill rate, so people are not...
Yeah, no, we set the mill rate up.
People are not voting for a mill rate, they're voting for an amount.
It's set after the vote.
Right, so after the vote, you can set the mill rate, you set the mill rate for...
It could be 32.70, I don't know what the math is.
Exactly.
And, 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 in defense of my Board, um, when we did this, we met Monday night to do this, we did, they don't, I don't think they voted until after 10 o'clock, for, we didn't know what was going on up there, but now...
But my point is that if you could, if you could do that, I think we'd give people a comfort level.
Wait, what did it say?
Sorry, John, I'm sorry, John.
Go ahead.
Say, if, if you're able to do that, I think it would give people a comfort level that might feel uncomfortable voting for this budget until AMITI passes, at least knowing that the impact of the first failed referendum on AMITI was taken into consideration by the Board of Finance in reducing, like I say, it could be just one one-hundredth of a mil, but it's still, I mean, it would make a difference, I think.
Let me, let me ask you this, when we go to vote on the number...
You come up.
Aren't we by law supposed to cover it with the mill rate, so...
Right, well, the mill rate is just a factor, right? You're legally obligated to fund.
But, but the number is the higher number.
But then our revenue will be, our revenue will be lower than what we asked for in our referendum. See what I'm saying?
Your revenue would be lower because you reduced it to cover, to take out that piece that AMITI reduced by.
Right.
So your revenue would be that much less.
But we did go to referendum with a higher number, so, I, I mean, we're talking about one-tenth, we could probably do it. I'm not sure it's legal to do.
You're fun, you should be funding at last year's budget, from AMITI's perspective. You're funding Orange's at, at what you're proposing this year.
Right, right.
And AMITI at what you're funded at last year, because you don't have, you don't have an approved budget.
No, they're in our budget.
No, they're in our budget at their first request.
And we had to go out, and I'm sure the ballot's already printed with the number on it.
Yeah, but so it still sits at that total number, and that's where the problem is, what Mitch is saying, then you're, you're overcharging.
But Kevin, couldn't you, couldn't you buy, I'm sorry, Kev?
We'd have to lower down the expense side.
Kevin and John, couldn't you, for lack of a better word, tweak the tax collector's revenue amount by a, by a percentage down that would still give you the same amount of coverage of what the voters put through? I think there's a way of doing it, is what I'm saying.
I could, I could tweak the mill rate to get it down to 100 and whatever that difference is.
Exactly, yeah, okay.
There's no question about that, but I'm not sure we could do that legally, because we've, we're supposed to have a balanced budget. We went to referendum at whatever our number is, 78.
But you still balance, you can still balance it by tweaking the, the tax collec, the, the tax collection revenue percentage you put in. You don't put it 100%, right?
Oh, you mean, oh, you mean our collection rate?
Right.
We could do that.
Right.
We could do that.
And make it, make it balanced.
Yeah. But if we do that, we're not tweaking the mill rate.
I'm saying to, I'm saying to adjust the revenue, so you still have the amount. I think it can be done. I'll, I'll leave it at that. I hope you can do it, because I think that'll give people a comfort level in voting for this budget, which is what you want them to do, and we, I think the people at this table want to have happen.
You'll find out.
So would that require another Board of Commons meeting?
It would be here, after the, um, after the vote, because if it's voted down, we don't have to do anything. Come back.
All right, so we should talk about it between now and then?
Because I think the ballot question is a dollar amount, and that dollar amount is now overstated by $104,000.
Yes.
So we'll bring it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
The other comments on the budget? Stay on, I don't think they're hurting. No?
We have to summarize what we're doing?
No. Well, that's a very good discussion. It, it's interesting, and I want to thank the Board of Finance and the Finance Director, and Dr. Scarpetti, and Chairman Kraut is back there, and their board, and the Town Treasurer, Art Williams is sitting back there, and a bunch of others who have participated to make this all possible. It's, it's, uh, what Kevin said is concerning, since that budget of AMITI's failed, and it is believed through all that is out there in the chattermills, that it wasn't necessarily about dollars that caused that, uh, referendum to fail. The three First Selectmen meet with the Superintendent of AMITI once a month, and our meeting happened to be the Friday before the referendum, and we, all three of us were, had different questions. We talked about our towns and different impacts with AMITI, but we also talked about this particular topic, and it was kind of enlightening, because I'll be quite honest with you, I didn't understand it, um, prior to our meeting, I thought it was something a little different. I thought they were hiring a teacher to teach the students, and they're hiring a teacher that you can call a certified, I asked if couldn't somebody with a master's in social work handle this, and, uh, the Superintendent told us, no, she wanted a certified teacher who would be a teacher slash trainer slash coach, is how I would, it was titled to us, and this person is going to teach the teachers how to handle a situation if it comes up within the class, with, uh, students, with whatever it may be that falls under this diversity, equity, inclusion umbrella. And so I asked her, I said, well, the teachers normally have two or three training days during the course of the school year. I said, wouldn't it be better if you brought in a subcontractor, same as what the corporate world does, a trainer, that would meet with different teaching groups for their CEU days, and train them, and the guidance staff, who should pick up the slack on it? And she didn't like that idea, and, uh, we had great discussion, but she, the Superintendent did not agree, and I said, and then you would have the third-party consultant in the event that you had an issue where, whether the student or the student's family and all wanted to bring process against the Board of Education in some way, shape, or form for further discussion of the issue that falls under that umbrella. And it didn't go that way. I think you, personally, I think that you could get more depth of knowledge and opinion and thought, because you would not necessarily have one person's view, training and teaching and coaching all your staff, but you would have the opportunity to have a person, you might use the ABC company for a consultant, or you might get, your labor attorneys might recommend a, a, a different consulting group that deals with people with certain other issues. I don't know anything personally about how the coaching and all would be, but I do see it from the town side of how, when we bring in consultants to do, uh, different work and look at, uh, uh, different projects, um, you know, so that was my thought and recommendation to the Superintendent, but it didn't, uh, go that way, which was disappointing, but then nonetheless, the referendum happened, and, uh, I heard that they had quite a lively meeting up there at the, uh, high school and all, but, uh, I said this at our budget hearing, and I'll say it again here, this room is orange. Everybody's behaved, everybody's cordial to one another, and it all works out, and it's kind of like when I go into, and Mitch has to do the same thing in his job, when you go into the union negotiations, when everybody walks away from the table thinking that they didn't get the best deal that they could've got, that means it probably worked out for everybody a little bit, and I think that's where we're gonna be with this, but I think that, um, there will still be more voices to be heard within the three communities. I was shocked when I saw the numbers, I, I knew we had a huge turnout here, I mean, we had a tremendous, you never see us get, I forget what it was, almost 1,200 votes here for a budget. We're lucky if we get 250 to 300 votes, to get on with, I think it was four votes shy of 1,200. I said, what the hell, the numbers aren't that bad, what is it? Well, then it turned out it wasn't about the numbers, and, um, when it failed in Wood, when somebody called me and told me the numbers in Woodbridge, I was absolutely stunned, because Woodbridge, they never, ever, they don't even flinch, their mill rate is up to like, I think, 45 this year, as opposed to our 32, and they don't flinch, but this year they did, and even Bethany, Bethany that doesn't usually get too involved. So I was quite surprised when I saw the results from the, uh, three towns that night. I was, uh, I've been going at this for a long time now, and I was quite surprised, but, um, the district meeting, our meeting for our referendum, as Kevin already said, is the 18th, the district meeting at AMITI is the 23rd, I believe, and the referendum will be held in this room again on the 24th for the AMITI budget. So that's all we can offer, and while it's cheers to some and disappointment to others, the best thing that came out of it was, we actually got a reasonable amount of people came out to cast a vote, and that is, for years, we, the voter apathy has been poor. So I am thankful for all of those that came out, at least that took the time to, uh, cast their, uh, votes on this. So we will see you in this room on the 18th.
Did you want to, sir, did you have something to say?
I just have a question, what's the new problem that's arisen with AMITI consultants and/or...
It's, uh, it, evident, we believe, all I can say is, we believe, is the position that the Superintendent, I did speak with the Chairman of the AMITI Board today also at length, um, it's a position called DEI, the acronym, and it's, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and it falls, it covers that very broad umbrella of some of our students that have different, um, life, I don't know what the right word is, lifestyle, gender identification, that sort of thing, yeah, um, that is the problem. When I spoke with the Chairman today, he has spoken with the Superintendent, I guess, and asked at that meeting the other night, have you had requests from other teachers for this? And she said, no, she told him no, and they asked, well, what is the push for this? Who's pushing for it? And she really couldn't give him an answer, but it's something that's out there in the greater world across the country, and in some places, it's being met with open arms, and in some places, it's being met with anger and frustration, but that's what it seems to be.
Is there a problem with the Orange schools?
The Orange schools, it has not been a problem, to the best of my knowledge. Dr. Scarpetti is back here, as there, I don't think there's been any problem or issue, to the best of my knowledge, in the elementary school system.
May I?
Absolutely.
It's a trend, it's a trend in the...
It's a trend in the...
Your name and address. I know, but you have to state your name for the record, since it's a town meeting.
Wrong K 90 Wall Drive, or?
That's it. Perfect.
Mr. Zeoli, if I may?
This is Dr. Scarpetti, the superintendent of the Orange Elementary School System.
How are you, sir? Nice to meet you. If I may, and this is something that's read every board meeting, it's a shorter version, and it's on our website. The Orange Elementary School District recognizes that the education of each child is the sheer responsibility of every member of our community. Our goal is to inspire and empower each student to achieve academic excellence, embrace social and individual responsibility, and lead with integrity. We believe all individuals should be valued and treated with respect. We are committed to providing powerful academic challenges, respecting individuals and community values, nurturing personal growth, taking pride in our children and celebrating their successes, promoting school and community spirit, enhancing lifelong learning, believing all children deserve a childhood, and creatively, confidently building the future. Together, we will make a difference. I assure that with all of you only because we embed diversity, equity, inclusion in that, when we talk about all students. There's a variety of committees that we have, starting from the Board of Education, our subcommittees, cabinets. We have a PTO council that involves parents and teachers. These conversations continually go on, and we welcome any suggestions and feedback to make it better. You know, the joke goes, bigger kids, bigger problems. We do, are in charge of pre-K to six, but when issues arise, to Mr. Zeoli's point, we do have professional learning. We do have consultants come in. But these are conversations that are occurring on a daily basis. And I think the big piece that I want to echo what Mr. Zeoli said, this is a huge umbrella. You know, when you talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, and I think there's another committee that the town's dealing with, this is not just a matter of color or gender identity, this has to do with inclusivity of all. So one example that has come up that we've dealt with, and I think the town is dealing with, we have students with special needs. We, prior to some years, our students could even, some of our students couldn't even get on our playgrounds. We develop playgrounds to be inclusive of those students, and I know the town is working on that too now with a committee. So there's a variety and a broad spectrum of it. We are learning as we go. We are willing to make mistakes, because there are new things that are rising all the time, but we are dealing and addressing anything that comes our way, and are happy to, if anyone thinks that we can improve and better, please don't hesitate to reach out to me and contact me.
Thanks, Fitz.
Thank you. Thank you. If I may.
Mitch, to your point to quantify what you had brought up, I don't know what the process is to make that change, but I did quantify it. So it's a small amount, 104,350 or something you said, Kevin? So if you took the 78 million, I did it quick and dirty, you know, the number will be close, grenade close anyway. So if you had $7,000 in taxes like I do, and if you had this amount taken out, then for the reduction for me, was on the order of $10. Now, you could sit there and think that, oh, that's not any big deal, but you didn't grow up in the household, in the Leahy household in Boston, thinking $10 was not a big deal. So I don't know exactly what the process is, but it's kind of in that ballpark for a $7,000 tax bill, Mitch, that it would be $10, and I'm not minimizing it because it's only $10. To me, it's $10. If there's a way to do it, I think it's a good idea. I just don't know the process.
The process, I think, is when you guys set a mill rate after the budget is passed, but, but the other question is, since you did some calculations over there, did you calculate how many hundreds of a mill that comes out to, or does it?
No. What I did was I took, I take, I just took 78 million, because I couldn't remember exactly the number.
Yep.
And I know 92% is in residential taxes, therefore covered by mill rate, so that brought it down to 71,760.
Yep.
Roughly. And then I took 104,350 divided by that, got a percentage, percentage of that to my seven grand, and that's how I got 1042, if you really wanted to do the math.
Thanks, Jim.
I could have not done it that way, but that's the inside baseball.
The town attorney will look into it and will report back to the Board of Finance and the Finance Director if there is an answer to that. I know there is, and Attorney Marino is very excellent at researching, and so he will do that and then meet with the Board of Finance or its board and let them know what their allowances are on that. With that said...
I was just about to say, hearing no further comments, the meeting is recessed until the budget referendum.
Oh.
Yes, you may.
Yeah, you have to speak up here. And as you heard me say for this man over here, name and address for the record.
Hey, everybody. Rob Lim, 956 Corn Todd Lane. I just wanted to expand a little bit on the AMITI discussion about DEI, because I don't think Dr. Byers' position was really clearly articulated. The challenge is, AMITI has a very public record of just unacceptable activities. There's antisemitism, swastikas, N-word, you know, it's not a good situation. The purpose of the position is to really provide support to the teachers so they can kind of navigate through those and respond appropriately. I think from her perspective, you know, consultants not really enough. Usually consultants are a situation where you can kind of come in, set a plan up, and then go with it. I mean, this is my view of consultants. But I think it's more like a coach, like if you have an athletic team, right, and you want like a nutritional coach, or, you know, I know, somebody to help somebody's performance better, you know, you need that kind of daily interaction. So I think that's really what her position was. I think the AMITI Board of Education found a way to solve it, but, you know, I just wanted to kind of put that out there, that that's more of the context.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Hearing none, the meeting is recessed until the budget referendum on Wednesday, May 18th. Thank you for all for coming. 7:06.